Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, all.
Morning.
Good morning.
First of all, we'll look for approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
You have a motion? If there's a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried. Minutes from nine twenty-four.
Make a motion to prove the minutes from nine twenty-four is printed.
We have a motion.
Second.
And second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carried. General public concerns.
Who's first?
Anybody? Are you guys being, you're not on the agenda, or are you gonna?
I think we need to have a talk now.
Not be, not let do it.
Yeah, there's no drainage.
Right, yeah.
So Rick just comes down here so often that he comes every Monday, whether there's drainage or not.
Yeah, yeah, you too. That's right. There's representatives from King Construction here. You're all aware, I'm sure, of the difficulties they've encountered out there. I just heard a report on Spencer this morning that June was the wettest month, wettest June in history. That's some of what they've been battling. Sandy conditions. They had a board across the end of the pipe with an excavator holding it in place, and still a lot of material got in the pipe. So they've been working with pumps, one four inch, two three inch, trying to force water through it to get it to clean out. And they've got quite a bit of it to move. Had a jetting machine come out. They've arranged for a larger jetting machine, but the costs are starting to add up on this. So they've, they've made a request here. This was a Friday afternoon. Been a lot of sand that has entered the pipe because of the crazy amount of rainfall that took place. The pipe needs to be adjusted. King Construction has already spent time trying to jet the line, but it needs to be done by a jetting company. We're proposing a change order of eighty-five hundred dollars in order to recover these costs. I talked to King, thought it'd be good for them to be here. Talked to Dial and Harland. Thought it'd be good for them to be here just to have an open discussion on this matter. I know we couldn't make any decisions today, but just to get all the information out for perhaps a decision at a later date. But King wants to have Jordan Yonkey with our inspectors here, too, as far as any questions that he, for what he's seen out there. Several of you, I think, have been out there. I know Eric has at least, more than once.
Yeah, and how, well, my question is, how much silt, if you want to call it silt, got in? And how far down the tile line did it get?
Um, the silt, I would say at one point was, oh, probably ninety percent full of the pipe. And then, um, for about eighty feet, I want to say. And then we turned on, um, we brought up our pumps, the big generator, and we're, with all the pumps running, we'd run about fifteen hundred gallons per minute down the pipe. And we probably, between that and, um, the jetter guy coming out, we probably brought it down a foot. So I would say the pipe's probably fifty percent full right now. It's enough, the, as a forty-two inch pipe, I can crawl, I've been down the pipe myself. I crawl up over the sand and crawl all the way through the pipe. Um, so that's, I would say it's about half full of sand right now.
For about what length, would you say?
About eighty feet.
About eighty feet still?
Yeah, I think it's probably, from the start of the block, it probably just tapers, tapers down eighty.
And if you get past eighty feet, it's clean?
Yeah, there's enough water coming into the tile main already that it kind of just, it kind of flushes itself out. Um, I've gone down to the, to the apron, to the end of it where the creek is, and you can, you get about four pieces of pipe up in there, and it, it could take you off your feet, you know, there's that much flow and velocity. And it's loud, it's like a hurricane, you know, it's just loud in that pipe, so.
Oh, yeah.
There's water rushing through there, I think.
What, approximately, you know, from where outlets into the ditch there, how far have you guys got with all these difficult, you know, how far, how much pipe have you got put in?
Around fifteen hundred feet.
Fifteen hundred feet up from it?
Yeah.
Uh, and so have you done the jetting as far as, you know, because jetting, to me, I've been around it a little bit, by no means an expert, but it goes in and it blows the material backwards.
Yeah, they like to start on the downhill side of the block, and then they can work that up. And the orbs just blow back to it.
Because you don't really want to move, and you, there's a lot of stuff in there yet.
Right.
You don't want it to just keep trying to flush it down, because, yeah, you'll dissipate it, but you're still going to have an amount in your tile line.
The jetter that we have lined up, he kind of has like a, I want to call it maybe a six inch vac as well. So he will, he will stick that in and jet at the same time. So a lot of that material, he should be able to, to back out as it comes down. So that will get a lot of material out just by doing that. And then once it gets passed, sort of by, it's going to pick up water and eventually just run out the end of the pipe.
But, yeah, the jetting would be the removal of all the crud that's in there, get it out of there.
Yeah, yeah.
What's jetting company are you working with?
We have out of Cherokee.
Okay.
Sounds like they have a big unit, um, that can really move the material.
Okay. Yeah, you definitely.
They have got any better conditions now as far as the soils.
Yeah, soils are, soils are very good. We just need to be able to, uh, get the, keep the water getting away from us. Um, that's our biggest issue. We could, as long as it's not raining, we can, we can lay pipes as long as it's not raining. But it's just, we've got to get that block together so that water has somewhere to go. That's our main concern. And then we're in good clay for the most part, so, you know, we, the one day we did run a little bit of pipe in that, I mean, we were doing six pipes an hour, so we're not the most we've ever done here upon this project. So I think we're in good conditions for the soils.
So essentially, you're asking for dollars for the jetting?
Yeah.
Is that the way you understand it?
That's how I see it, yeah. Unusual conditions, uh, creating the need for the jetting.
Uh, question for you, Rick.
Yeah.
Um, are you planning on staying to the east of the, all the way up now?
That's the plan. It depends on, on any info we can get as far as if it's better to change over because of tiling, if you've done.
Um, and I've, and I gave Taylor the maps the other day, so he's kind of got an idea. And I've got it, got it staked out. The thought I got, I'll throw out, is if we're going up there, because you were going to crush it all.
Yes.
So once we get up to Harland's and you reconnect where you want to on the other side of the highway. I know where all the, on the west side, I know where all of them are on mine, at least for the first three quarters of a mile, other than the one county tile that comes in. And so that'll all be plugged off. Do we need to tear it up and crush it all if we, as long as we get what we need to? And just block that so it can't suck water on the upper end? And then, uh, down through Rodney's and Ains'es, the guy will have to, there's a couple there that's, and you'd know whether we've got any other ones coming in from the west, so we wouldn't have to tear it all up and bust it. Is there anything wrong with just leaving it there?
No, as long as you've got cover on it. I mean, if it was real shallow and left it, I'd be concerned, because if it collapsed, you'd have.
Yeah.
Whole right at the surface. But with some cover on it, I wouldn't be too worried about it.
Because I would think that could save some money there.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'd just throw that out.
Sure. That's worth talking about further with the contractor, because they have some time.
We would agree to that, no problem.
Yeah, because they, they go in some time for that, uh, extra here.
I mean, it might be enough to offset this here.
It's, it would, probably not enough, but it'd certainly help, yeah.
Well, I have a couple. You're fifteen hundred feet in the ground, so that's where we at coming from the ditch? Are we halfway across that section? Is that where we are halfway at?
I'd say third, maybe a little away.
All right, so my question is, is would we be better somewhere, can we put a, some type of, like, for lack of a better term, like a manhole in there sometime? My, my fear is, is we get clear up past the road and we continue to have the rain that we have, that's a long crawl for somebody to go from the road down to the dredge ditch to see if we. If we got forty-two inch pipe with, that's half full of sand, that's a hell of a lot of sand and dirt in there.
Yeah.
Then sooner or later, you're going to have to figure out, is it flowing? Is it flowing full capacity? Is it, I mean, the rains we've had, it'll blow it out when it's all connected. I just, I guess my feeling is.
That's why you will it?
Well, their, their point is, oh, to clean it out now before you continue on, correct?
Right, yeah, we're.
That's the way you want to do it.
I understand that, but I'm saying, generally, you have to have something in there if, because you go up that thing backwards crawling well fifteen hundred feet, for me.
Well, for sure, you're not going to climb up it.
Forty-two inch pipe is still a pretty good sized pipe.
Right, but I mean, I, that, I see where you're, it's an inspection point, but that's also extremely expensive to install a manhole.
Here's what we have going for us, is that if we verify that this gets cleaned out, um, the accumulation will be at the upper end that they're working at, if there's going to be accumulation. You can tell that, you pull the board off and you look in there, you can see far enough, um, like you said, that the actual.
And if you're out of the sand, clay don't wash.
No, no. So it's, you know, we'll be monitoring it, but we should be able to see anything that accumulates in the upper end of the pipe as installed. So, yeah, point we'll take, and that's one thing we talked about actually last week, was access point of some kind. But the idea now is to get this cleaned out now and monitor it as it goes on.
What does this big jetter don't clean?
I don't know, I guess. I, I really think it will.
Yeah, I, I'm.
This is big equipment.
Yeah, I don't probably clean.
I mean, it's at least a sixty, seventy thousand pound unit. I mean, we're talking a big semi with a, I don't know how big the tank is on it, but it's, it's a massive, uh, unit, so. And this is very common for them to, I mean, they don't think, I mean, this is very common for them to do. This is probably one of their easier jobs, I would say, because they used to work in the cities where you're fourteen, fifteen feet deep in a manhole and turning through eight inch sewer lines and, and stuff like that, so.
And it vexes it at the same time?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Bruce's idea of an inspection, what about, and I know it's a long ways off, but in the road ditch up there, half mile, uh, what about putting in a big intake which could serve as a manhole?
Doable.
On the north side of the road, because there's a lot of drainage comes.
Comes down that hill.
Water right to that area.
We can pick it up before it goes under the road and on the.
Well, it was almost the height, or the level with the road last week, when I was out there with, and Dial, I mean, it was that, that much volume flowing through that.
Yeah.
And, and part of the problem is that, that it's not culvert, or whatever you call it, that goes under there is, half, half to two thirds full of dirt.
Full of dirt, yeah.
I, that's a good option, I think. I never object to intakes. It's designed to take the water, so.
I think as you get you, it's an inspection point, too.
Yeah.
If you're going to spend the kind of money that you're spending, um, A, you don't want to put pipes in and it's already half full of dirt, and then we don't, we haven't accomplished anything, but eight thousand dollars to have them jetted out to make sure that it's cleaned and whatever that number would be to put a inspection area in there, to me. But that would be the time to do it, not two years from now and saying, oh, we're going to have to dig it back up and, because it's.
Yeah, we'll have to put a very large structure in probably, because where's the pipe size change? Is it after road or a little north?
Along the way.
Yeah, so we have to have a big enough structure that forty-two can come in and go out of there. Probably eighty-four inch, we'll look at that.
Yeah, at least.
Yeah, because you.
And you have a manhole made, and, I mean, that's going to take time to, you know.
Is all that really necessary?
Can't you put just a, just a two foot pipe coming up and put a grate on it?
You could.
Just like a standard intake?
You could, that'd be.
Wouldn't be enough.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be enough?
No, not there.
The only thing is, a lot of that water will, this, will take a lot of that water, hopefully, to just clean it up out of mine and it keeps running down.
There's a lot of surface water there though.
Yeah, there are always going to be surface waters.
Everything comes out, there is a lot there.
But you'd be amazed how much water comes down all them intakes with, you know, you, you look just south of the gravel road there on Jason's.
Yeah.
And there's not a whole lot of surface water just south of the road, but there's a pretty good stream going down through your field at that point, really. If we can get rid of all that into the tile, that'll.
It'll make a world of difference, yeah.
Was it, there a plan, something, the plans already for intakes and such for the surface water?
I don't remember how many intakes we had along there. Did, do we have any of the clean water, clean water area drains?
So no, no, there is no intake in this ditch area that we're talking about, per se?
I, I think an open intake could be the way to go.
Especially north side of the road.
Yes, because of the surface, how much surface area drains to that spot.
Is there, and there, is there an intake there now on the old system?
There is.
Which I know isn't very adequate, very nothing, but, so, and there was not a plan, one of the new ones?
No, no.
Well, if nothing else, maybe this was good discussion to have, had done when you get to that point.
Yes.
Right.
Make it that much better.
Well, yeah, I, that's good, though.
Just lace research and see what.
Okay, well, back to this water jetting thing, this is, that's about the only way you're going to clean that pipe.
Sort of digging it up.
Why, that's what my question was, is what would the, the cost been to taking that whole pipe out there and dumping it? Instead of adding to that pipe like you guys did? There, that wasn't an option to take that pipe out of there and try to clean it out?
Um, right now, we're in hydraulic sand, probably the worst on site, and, uh, it's hard enough getting a pipe in once. It's about near impossible to put that pipe in back again.
That's awful, yeah.
Good question, but, yeah, you, that's, that's.
And all of that, in that eighty foot area of the, where it's plugged, that's right in the hydraulic sand area?
Yeah.
That makes sense, yeah, you.
It's nasty digging.
The sand looked about the same as it did when you came out.
Yeah.
It was that same type of flowing just continuously.
Yeah, it's awful.
Like this goes with water.
It's awful.
We, our soil piles are, I mean, forty feet wide, I mean, we can't get any soil pile to stand up at all, you know, it's just.
It's just, there's no consistency to it.
Yeah.
Harland must have looked at it.
I went down there after we had that last rain, and where it broke through your, your dirt pile, it was like a waterfall coming into that whole area. Yeah, it bound to put that into the tile.
Yeah, that's, I, that's a pretty good explanation of why you wouldn't take it out.
But we're, we're through that area now.
Yes.
Pipe's all sealed up, so we clean the pipe, we're not going to have this revisited again.
Right, correct.
Right.
The contingency makes sense, you, any time the contractor has a change order or any problem with the building, this is no different. We have to do it.
It's unusual conditions, it really is, and an unusual year.
How's it working since you offset away from the old tile line? I mean, I know it's not so good because of the rain, but.
Uh, what, we can average, granted, we like to be up in that five hundred foot range a day, but, um, once we moved that pipe over for when you're out there, I mean, we're, we're averaging two hundred feet a day, you know, granted, some conditions were.
Where then you got into the, the sand thing that we talked about, that.
The sand would start and then it would kind of be okay, and then, um, you know, now it was spotty. And now we're to a point where we've put in a hundred feet through good clay for the most part. I mean, there's some sand in there, but it's mostly, mostly clay.
So really, this whole plugging of the tile thing, if we wouldn't have this, you were saying something about the record rainfall in June? You better check the rainfall for September. I bet it's also a record.
I bet it is, too.
So if we wouldn't have that, we probably wouldn't even be here talking about it.
Right, yeah.
I mean, it was all, this problem of the needing a jetting was all caused from the huge amount of rainfall.
And I don't, and I don't want to really, not want to take it in a glance for anything, but, uh, that sand I came in there, came from the backside uphill and then down through. So it's not like it came on the uphill downhill into the pipe, if that makes sense. So, I mean, we, uh, we did our part on, on trying to block out the end, and we backfilled on the backside of from where we stopped for the, for the evening, and we backfilled all that. And all that water came around and pushed everything we backfilled down the pipe, and that's how, that's how it got full of sand. Which I, I've never had, had water run uphill like that before, but that just shows you how much water we're dealing with.
Phenomenal amount.
Yeah, it, it was strange to go out there and look and see that the top part of the backfill was gone and that it had washed uphill, basically, and then going into the pipe.
There was probably like anywhere from four to six foot canyons that were just cut out like gullies, basically, when, when it was done running. So if that tells you anything, we're only, we're averaging ten feet, ten and a half to eleven foot deep, so.
Unreal.
Well, they're doing, I, I would say they're doing an excellent job of laying the pipe.
Well, that's what I want to hear from the farmers here. Do you feel this is something negligent on the, could it be contractor's fault?
I don't think, and they've been doing a super job that, you know, I don't know if they could have had it plugged better up at the top end to where nothing could have got in or something, but, um, as far as laying the pipe, they're doing an excellent job, it seems to me. I, they have a bid here again, I'm sure, recommended for what I see.
Well, it's all very positive.
The Hummer County sign and these tail lights and these levers.
Sure, two miles north, north here, you know, that wall.
Well, it's really nice to have this kind of participation from the people that are paying for the project, and not all of them, but a lot of them are here, you guys. So you have the explanation with the jetting, which is definitely the way to go to get that. Add a little bit to the bill. Dial said maybe there's something upstream, you can just leave some old stuff in place and not mess with it, little cost savings. But is that something that is palatable, I mean, to keep this project moving? Because it's going to be, the bill is going to be extra on, on the district, obviously.
Well, I, I almost think you're just going to have to wait till we're done with the project to see where you're coming in at, don't you think? I mean, this is going to be a bill, but maybe that we're saving somewhere else.
I hope so, I hope so.
Yeah, we're all, and King said, we're, we're all for, a lot of these projects, we don't, we leave the old main in and just do crossovers every thousand feet, five hundred feet in your distance, you know, and, and we let that old stuff work. I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to try and do a little bit of that to save a little bit. Um, so if that's something to consider, I mean, I think it, it would work for us.
So what would be the plan if this jetting don't work? You've got to have an option for that. Well, what other options do we have?
I'm hoping for.
I'd hope.
I'm hoping for an option.
The drought.
Yeah, but you've got to have an option. What is your option? You're going to have to go back and dig it up and start pulling it out and.
I honestly believe this jetting will.
Fourteen inch, two inch pipe.
You're talking, you got to.
I'm fairly confident the jetting.
I mean, these jetters work for, for Tyson and all these people that got eighteen, and that's the most things they have, eighteen, twenty-four inch. I mean, just some of the nasty stuff you can think of, then, um, it, it's not going to be an issue. And if not, I, I, it, it just won't be an issue.
Well, I, what I imagine being just, just conversation, um, imagine you'll have to put together a change order and have to get it up here next week and.
Right.
And, um.
So when would they be able to?
Uh, either tomorrow or Wednesday. At, basically as soon as it's fit for them to, to get their rig in.
Yeah, the sooner they get it done, the better.
How bad were you thinking it out there the other day, Dial with that water?
Coming or what?
No, when you had the, didn't you take that tank out there?
Your water tank.
Your water and that.
Yeah, it was, it's fairly solid back there.
If you get a day of sunshine, it dries right up.
Well, if you got a day of sunshine, you know.
I don't Wednesday, but I mean, that road back there is, it's pretty decent. Got it decent, and I, I turned, turned around there and drove to that Thursday, Friday, I think. Yeah, pulled the truck back out and.
Okay.
It was, uh.
Good. Well, I guess proceed with caution and get something back to us and.
Yeah, we'll be monitoring everything.
I'm watching from the distance to see, I, I try to keep an eye on, well, my God, they did move up the hill there, there.
We're just not moving up equipment every night, so it looks like we got something.
Well, I'm sure it is, it's heartening to, to do that, walk into that, and I imagine, imagine the guy that's bottom of the hole really feels.
Well, it's pretty wet.
Uh-huh.
But, uh, that's the way it goes.
Right.
Well, we've showed, what, thirty-eight inches of rain on that farm this year so far.
Gee whiz.
Thirty-eight.
Better than Hurricane.
They have them down south.
So that's a lot of water on that farm, oh my gosh. Yeah.
That's a lot of water.
Well, we shouldn't have a burn bin in this fall, I'm guessing.
Probably not. Well, that's what I recommend. It, it seems like most of the farmers here are in agreement, we got to get something done, keep the project moving.
Yeah.
Uh, and this is what you run into with Mother Nature, you get some unforeseen problems, so get it put together, we'll do it. Like you say, retroactive or whatever.
Perfect.
Right, all right.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. What a way to start your day.
Yeah. I'll be back in when you're ready to just go over a couple other drainage things, but you'll.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you all. Keep your head above water out there.
It's at thirty-five C. Is that what it is? I might have to ask for a, for them, but I've got some of the numbers in my head, thirty-five.
Go ahead.
I talked to Rick a little bit about it, about the.
We got laid already.
And since I didn't, I think it's outdated. I think it's generated unfair and.
On the.
That reclassification.
Reclassification? So we have any answers for changing the reclassification system as to outdated and unfair?
The state has, and I gave, I said, I think it should be the same charge for all acres, because if you get two inches of rain, every square foot in that area has all gotten the two, the two inches of rain. Whether it runs down on somebody else or, or whatever, it, it all got the same amount of water. Why should one have to pay for the water of the other?
Well, one little difference is, if you're a mile away from the main, it's going to cost you a fortune to get access to the main.
Right, you got to take that into consideration.
I agree with that, but to start with.
I don't think the soil should make so much of a difference like they used to. And they, you know, it used to be they put a lot of weight on the soil types. I think now it should be more distance and slope.
But why should the people on the bottom pay for the water that comes from the slope?
Right. That's what, that's what I'm saying. I think slopes and distance from the mains should take more consideration than soil types. And now when they pattern tiles, I mean, they tile whole farm, they don't just tile the wet soils.
Right, that's why I say I think it's outdated, because the universities are promoting pattern tiling. And, uh, a lot of that is being done, whether it's high ground, slope or bottoms.
Yeah.
So, uh, I guess I, I question how you can charge more for those that have the bottom ground, because the water comes from someplace else, a lot of it.
Yeah.
Uh, Rick said that, uh, there's been a couple times it's been proposed to state, they just have a flat. Uh, they write it out, cost by, to the, you know, number acres divided cost, and it's all the same. But I, I go along with you, and if you're, we'll say you have one charge for the first eighty rods, and maybe the next eighty rods is a little less and so on, because of the added cost of getting them to the, the main. I'd just start out with an initial flat fee.
Yeah, and another thing is to consider is, some of this land that was purchased, was purchased virtually nothing because it was a swamp. And now you put the main right through there, you just took land that was worth virtually nothing and made it valuable. And somebody else paid for it. And somebody else is making that difference.
And so it's take.
That's what happens no matter when you change, if you change a system, that's going to happen, you know, in that change order.
Yeah, but that's, that's some of it. Land that repeatedly drowns out has a better benefit than land that's just got, that's just wet.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we can only.
Adjust it so much.
Adjust it so much, but according to the way the state has, has it set up is the way it's handled, right? So if the state were, is interested in changing, I mean, we go by the state rules.
I don't think, Harland, you're going to see it just, here's acres, here's the cost, and it's going to be divided up equally. That would actually be, be really unfair. Because Rick, Rick mentioned one of the reasons, because.
one of the reasons, because maybe not in you guys', yeah, maybe not in, you know, your area with this project, there's another upcoming tending project that it'd be highly unfair if it was done that way.
Yeah.
Because Rick made the mention of draining the swamp type thing, where they had a swamp and no outlet, and when the project gets done, they'll have a terrific outlet, they'll pattern tile a farm, and they'll increase the value of that farm around tenfold. And so.
And it's gonna cost them quite a bit of money to pattern tile it, too.
They don't care. They'll spend it.
But that's the cost, too.
But so.
And add it onto the swamp ground.
But I understand the, are you talking more surface water, that of course if it's higher elevation, goes to lower elevation, are you talking, you know, yeah, that's always a concern, but it.
Because if the district takes this two inch rain, I know one mile in distance this year would mean a lot of difference in the amount of rain, but in theory, if you have the same amount of water over the whole area, if that water runs on some, from one area to another, it still came from that same area.
Well, we're always open to, if they.
Discussion.
Change it and discuss, I mean, we'll try to do what we can do, but.
It would get rid of that reclassification cost, too.
Right. But there is a reason for that, and like I said, and every district's a little bit different, too, as far as, you know, fairness. And I wouldn't even begin to speak to where your district and this project is gonna end up. It may be, maybe closer to what you're saying, and there's not a huge differential in, you know.
Well, I'm not talking just ours. I.
I know.
Countywide.
But I, that's a dangerous spot, place to go, though. It really is, because you're gonna, yeah, we've been through enough other projects, not this one as much, but other ones. That'd be a dangerous place to go, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we need to adjust them a little bit that we can and do the best we can to keep it as fair as possible.
And the parameters of both states.
Right, with what you got to work with.
Right.
We've got a little tweaking and, yeah, that Rick is right. The fairness part of it is, you know, and that's what you're after, and that's what we're.
I always start every meeting when we talk drainage. Drainage is never fair. It's never gonna be fair.
It's gonna be a subject in this county forever.
Yeah, has been, will be.
Exactly.
Yep. Thanks, Arlen, thanks for coming today.
It's raining, you ain't gonna build enough pipe to, all the way anyway.
Well, at one point, they're gonna run out of pipe out there, and then the next thing is trying to get the pipe back out there for the next.
Oh, I look for brighter, sunnier days ahead.
Oh, yeah.
We shouldn't get any stillness whenever it was, too.
No, no.
All right.
Be like last year, it's grain, then October and November will be dry and sunny.
Yep, that's what we're shooting for.
I'm all for that. All right, on Thursday, I visited with Rick, being Rick was the one that put it on last week's agenda for Mary Hansen. So I had Peggy get ahold of her, and Peggy talked with her on the twenty-seventh before our agenda was out, and she sent her, or she, Peggy wasn't here today, so I had her write down, and I'll just read it to you. Mary Hansen's conversation notes, Humble County Board Supervisor. So I visited with Mary Hansen today concerning the chairman's request that I call and ask Mary to appear at the October first board meeting to give the board an update on the animal issue discussed at September twenty-fourth board meeting. Mary stated the following. Almost Home will not take the dog back. Jennifer Valk started a GoFundMe page to assist in caring for the dog and legal fees. Courtney is back living with the person, abuser of the dog, and Mary will not give the dog back to her. Mary will attempt, will adopt the dog to Jennifer if Jennifer signs a release of liability saying she knows the dog has a bite history. These are my recollections of the conversation. Peggy writes, ordering work for the. So, there we are.
What's your thoughts on that, John?
Well. I don't know that Jennifer would adopt the dog. I don't know what their answer would be.
I wouldn't have to be, I mean, everyone's.
I don't know that Courtney was back, that that guy, nor is that any of her business. I know that the adoption contract has changed in the last couple weeks, so what's happening is, again, Jennifer agreed to basically foster the dog until Courtney got her feet. So if the dog is adopted to Jennifer, Jennifer would not be able to give that dog to Courtney. She had to give it back to Mary if Courtney were in a position to take the dog. So I guess my opinion is we are exactly where we were last week and where we were Labor Day weekend. Separately from that, the Dakota City City Council met, I don't know if it was last week, I think the week before, so about ten days ago, and they determined that the dog is not a vicious dog. I don't, I don't know that we would need any relief to avoid liability for Humble County. A release just means that they would defend us if we were sued, but we can't stop someone from suing us. So if, you know, the dog bites somebody, and that person got bitter, their family wants to sue, you know, they'd sue fifteen people if they want. So a release doesn't, I don't think makes much difference, because I don't see how Humble County would be liable if the dog bit somebody tomorrow, or in six months, or in two years. The circumstances of the dog bite, when it was at the shelter, where the dog was injured when it got there, pretty badly, the dog is still not in good shape. So the dog were mad at me, I could run away from it. I'm not fast. I'm not faster than any dog. But this dog couldn't catch it, this dog might have to take about six steps and collapse or just stop running. So the person who was bit went to pick the dog up, and it hurt the dog, his dog nipped her, or him, I don't know who it was, and that person who was bit continued to deal with the dog, he didn't have any more problems. I don't know anything about dogs, and I don't have dogs, and I never did, but it seems to me if you hurt a dog, they might be mad at you. So I don't think that that bite is something that needs to put anyone on notice that this dog's a dangerous dog. I think everybody would know that a dog is injured if you hurt it more, might be angry. But what do I have? So I guess we're where we were a month ago. My concern, separate from this dog, I, prior to the board getting knowledge that Humble County is adopting out dogs, I don't think we would have had a problem had we been sued, but now that we know and nothing's been done about it, then I think, you know, we, we would have the potential for liability now if the adoption gone wrong. We know about it separately. The city manager suggested that the nonprofit runs everything, and the county's follow money's the nonprofit. And so with the city, I don't see anything in the code that allows you to do that. So you would need a twenty-eighty agreement. That's, and I will tell you that's out of my depth. I just, I don't know enough about dogs to even wanna get involved in what a twenty-eighty agreement with a shelter needs to consist of, if you guys are giving it my. So I just, I don't think this ends up being a simple deal anymore, and I wish it were. I don't think it ends up just being about this one dog. It's about the future and how Humble County wants to handle what to do with strays, and I think that's kind of been what you guys have been working on for the last, what, year or two years, when this came up and we found out we needed a place to put stray dogs and cats. So the shelter, to me, sounds necessary. The county has a duty to lead, pick up stray dogs. I told you by implication, I think cat, because it doesn't say not cat. And then you gotta somewhere to put it, put them. So I think the service is necessary. The fact that there's no shelter in Humble County means that the shelter they're working on is probably a very good idea.
You know, this whole thing is, by the very least, blown out of proportion. A, I don't think shelter, I think it was a holding facility, because we didn't have, we didn't have one that would meet code that was, that was, you know, a good spot to hold animals. Humble County, and I, we can check with our friends from the city, I don't think ever intended to start an animal shelter and get into all of this business, like we're not Almost Home. We just, correct me if I'm wrong, and you know as much about this as anybody, John, the sheriff was getting a little overwhelmed with stray animals.
Right.
And he came to us, and he said, you know, could we get a viable animal control officer? Okay, we thought we did. Can then, along with that, can we get a holding facility for said picked up animals? And we worked on it.
Right.
But this was just spiraled out of proportion. I mean.
Well, you know, you're right, Eric. And the big picture thing is, people on the outside think this is stupid, but the people involved, it's the most important thing in the world to them. So, you know, it, I'm looking at this as a giant time suck for me.
Yes.
I feel like I'm trying to run a shelter.
That's also not.
I don't, I don't wanna do that, and I don't know how. So whether it's a holding facility, a shelter, whatever you wanna call it, it's necessary. Having an animal control officer is necessary. What's happened is it seems like the shelter and the animal, or the holding facility or whatever, is merged into the same thing, and there's no way to tell them apart. And I think sooner rather than later, something would need to be done to either completely distance yourself from the holding facility, or set up something separately to deal with the adoptions of strays, and, you know, that's a good thing. Adopting out, one thing that, you know, Mary's done well with is, she moves those animals in and out. Except for this one dog. They move in and out, she does a good job with promoting and trying to get people to come take them. Ridiculous amount of stray cats, and we're getting people to find their lost dogs. Because it seems like nobody really loses the cat, but people actually lose dogs. So she's done a good job with that, and she's worked with the other shelters and whatever around here, and that's good, because I don't know that separately Humble County wanna be killing animals either, unless, you know, they have to. So is it gonna be a kill shelter, is it gonna be a kill shelter? What do you want out of that?
Again, it's starting to get blown out of proportion from what it started from. It wasn't a shelter. It was a holding facility, and there was somebody else besides the sheriff and his department to pick up stray animals. That, it's gone, and you know, John, you've explained it, it's just gotten melded into something that it really was never intended to be.
So it, you know, my suggestion is, whether you have a joint meeting with the Humble City Council, or whether you have a work session to discuss this, is you're going to need to figure out how you want to go forward with the holding place for these animals. Because right now, to someone on the outside, we can't explain how it's separate. The same person runs it pretty much under the same name. There's the Humble County Animal Shelter, or whatever it's called. And they can name it Humble County, whatever, but it's really hard to separate it when the Humble County Animal Control Officer was running, and the Humble County Animal Control Officer was making the decision on adoption. So, you know, this needs to be untangled, and it needs to be figured out, and I can't imagine why you'd wanna make these decisions, but you're at the point where you're either going to need to completely separate it out and define the roles, or work out a twenty-eighty agreement with the city and the shelter as to how it's gonna go. And what does that mean? That a member of the board supervisors is on the board of the shelter, a member of the city council is on the board of the shelter, which is, I'm sure you all want to be on another board, right?
Right.
But I don't, I think these are, these are the decisions that you're now forced to make, and if you think I'm wrong, then please tell me. I'm not trying to add work to anyone, or to make things more difficult. This is my opinion, Dave. How are we going to go with this?
My question is, this is set up by the state. We have to do this in order for each county to have someplace to go with these dogs, cats, whatever.
I don't know if it's state mandated.
It isn't? Why would we do it?
You have to have a place to.
You have to have a place for them to go.
If you.
And Almost Home won't take them. So we have to have.
We just had a holding facility that would meet state license requirements. We, no places that said that each county and the state needs to have an animal shelter.
No.
But we have one right now. Oh, we're building.
Well, that wasn't the intent.
I know that's, I know that's not the intent, but I think the end result of this is, how are we going to explain to the general public that, other than through whatever script about this meeting, that the animal control officer for Humble County, and the Humble County Animal Shelter, run by the same person, handled by the same person, not really differentiated, is not run by Humble County proper? I mean, that's where, that's where I'm troubled by this. Not, not because anything wrong has happened, it's just, I don't, I don't know how we redefine the roles. If you go to the Humble County Animal Control Officer Facebook page, donate to the Humble County Animal Shelter. There's a benefit that will help the Humble County Animal Shelter pay. Even me, I'm looking at this going, okay, well, it's the Humble County Shelter. I, it's ours, it's.
Well, so far, we've, we've become the villains in the whole thing because of the fact that, you know, we're the ones that they're putting on Facebook, we're the ones that they're broadcasting this meeting over Facebook. For why, I don't have a clue. We haven't done anything, other than trying to untangle this whole thing, right?
Right.
And I get called Almost Homes, right. The guy was very upset when he looked at the tape of the meeting here last week, and he said, they have never, ever refused to take this dog, and they hadn't been contacted to take the dog back.
I heard that, too. I didn't have time to check on it. I heard that late Friday afternoon, and I.
And he'd also talked with Dean.
Well, I think we've got a couple options, you mentioned them, but I think legality-wise, we can't really discuss them right off the bat here. But I guess we can discuss the possibility of, if you get to the animal shelter, and so you have twenty-eighty agreement, if that's correct, I mean, so say there was a wonderful facility, maybe, it wasn't even in Humble County, but it was a well-run, it was, it was an accredited animal shelter. Humble County and the City of Humble could contract with them.
That's what we used to do with Almost Homes.
Right. So, but remember, that's a whole different deal than what we were trying to accomplish. So there would be the twenty-eighty agreement, the, the animal control officer, jointly between Humble City and Humble County, would have these animals, and that's where they would go, if they had a shelter that had room to take them. That would be fine. I don't think we ever set out to create an Almost Home-type shelter in Humble County. Correct me if I'm wrong. It was a holding facility to get the pressure out of law enforcement. I think we have the due diligence to not let stray animals run amok in the county, and it's melded together in a really poor manner, I think.
Yes, I think it, what happens is, you guys probably are. Yes, I think it, it, what happens is, you guys probably aren't gonna spend two minutes a year thinking about the picking up of stray dogs and cats, unless one of the people in Humboldt County comes to talk to you about it. And it's, it's not like Mary comes in here every week, I picked up five dogs and seventeen cats this week. So, why would, why would you guys think about this? Why would I think about this?
Your phone just constantly rings.
Yeah, because this, this is the thing that we got into, that there was no-
No, but it's-
-intent for this to happen.
No, it wasn't, but it's not, it was a little surprising that it happened, but it's, it's, it's an area where you contracted with a person to pick up stray dogs and cats and take them to a shelter, or holding facility. And then separately, in the works with Denise Johnson, was, you know, attempting to build a shelter. Now, you were a little bit involved with that, but you didn't say, well, we want this person to run it, or we want to be in charge of picking who runs it, or anything like that. It was just two separate things going on at the same time. And what happened is your animal control officer got very involved with it, which is, again, fine, and there's nothing wrong with that. But now it's to the point where I think it's difficult to, to, to split off the roles. And I don't know that there's bad intentions on anyone's part here. I think there were good intentions, but now we have a, we have a dispute. And it's hard to resolve the dispute, because, again, the public is coming to Humboldt County, to you guys, and to me, saying, resolve this, and what we found out is that we have no power to resolve this. So, um, but everybody thinks that we do. And that there's the confusion, there's why, you know, we can sit here for the next twelve hours and say, we don't, we're not in charge of this, we don't do this, but the general public is, is very convinced that we do. So, that, that's a problem.
Well, we're gonna have to get this differentiated the way it's supposed to be. Because this is not the intent to waste John's time, our time, or anyone else's time on picking up stray animals. That this wasn't what the animal control officer position was ever meant to be.
And we need to get only Humboldt County animals.
Exactly, because if, if there's stuff like that floating around, that we're now looking for dogs, uh, pursuit counties, or, we've got one from Webster County, we-
So, that's the problem, when you have a, if you have a facility or someone's taking dogs, you're gonna get dogs from everywhere, and cats from everywhere.
And it's just-
Because everybody else's are full.
And, and, you know, with the, the extra person commenting and, and the posts, you know, that appears to be between about fifteen people. So, but it's loud, and I know people are talking about it. So, it's, there's a group of people that feel very, very strongly about how to handle animals and what should be done. And, and they're the people that are involved in this, on both sides. And I, so you gotta dispute over a dog, and then you have everybody thinking that we're supposed to resolve the dispute, and we learned that we cannot. So-
Well, that, I don't think that's any more clear to me than what we started out two weeks ago, or however long ago this has been going on.
Two months.
Did you have something, Dave, besides the latest Facebook business?
Well, that's two dogs in Algonah that she said at one o'clock this morning, or around one o'clock was posted, that the caller, that she would come and get them. How many dogs are the county paying for that's coming out of the county and out of state? That's, that's what I'd like to know, but I agree with John, we need to get a board set up and run that shelter, if it's gonna be a shelter or a holding facility. I was out there and worked with Dean on getting the location where it's at now, and, uh, it was gonna be a holding place, is what I understood at that time, it wasn't gonna turn into a shelter. We were just gonna take them in, get them out as quick as we could, and it's blown clear out of proportion. I've had a dozen calls this week, and people stopping by the house, uh, complaining about this. After the last week's meeting, they seen it, so it's, it's getting out of hand.
I, yeah, Bob? I, 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 yeah, I don't think anybody had bad intentions, of course. I don't know that anybody has bad intentions now, but it's sort of mustering into, it runs fine for the next hundred years if there's no dispute over anything.
Right.
Right? Whether she's taking dogs from Canada, or Texas, or just Humboldt, and they're, and cats do, and they're loading through, and adopting them out, and we're never gonna hear anything about it. And the grand scheme is, it probably didn't matter if it, everybody thinks it's one N P or not. So, now we have a dispute, and it, we learned against the hard way that we can't fix it, so it-
Why can't we fix it? What, what's, what's not fixable?
Well, Karen, the problem, the problem we have in trying to fix this is, it, it, it's my mistake to begin with. Because I looked at it as, as Mary were the county employee, so the county could step in and resolve this dispute. Mary's an independent contractor, with the only agreement between her and the board being that she pick up stray dogs and cats and take them to a shelter, that's it, that's the only thing she's supposed to do. So, if she's separately in another role, which is probably what she's doing, is adopting out dogs and cats, we don't have any control over that.
But she's using our title.
Right, and it's obviously been confusing enough to the people she's dealing with, that the people she's dealing with, they obvi, think that we're the ones that can solve this. And, you know, what I learned pretty quickly, I can't fix this. I, I mean, you all tried, and, and I tried, and I thought we had a good solution, and that has not- I mean, it's been since, what, September third, fourth, tenth, September tenth, that we thought this was taken care of. And really before that, it, it just hasn't been taken care of, and here we are, October first, back to where everybody was on Labor Day, with no sign of it changing.
So, then, we contribute money into a facility, along with the City of Humboldt, into a facility, which basically we don't have any control over what goes in there. That thing could be full of dogs, cats, horses, cows, chickens, goats.
Well, I, I mean, that's the same setup we had with Almost Home before.
I understand, but that was down there, we didn't, we didn't have any, other than, we were taking them down there.
With, with that up with Almost Home, Almost Home was an established shelter that's been in business for a long time, and with the Humboldt County Animal Shelter, that is not yet established, sort of in business, and, and it has no track record. So, you know, for you, for the county to contract with them right now, they have no board, they have no procedures in place. It would just be, right now, a contract with Mary.
Almost Home, we're paying forty bucks a dog. We had a contract with Almost Home, take first forty, first so many dogs, forty dollars a dog. After that, it was a hundred dollars a dog, I think.
So, you know, that would be, that would be something that probably would be available to you with whatever shelter you work with. If, if it's the Humboldt County Shelter, you guys-
Quit using that word, because there is no Humboldt County Shelter.
That's what it's called.
I know, but don't, don't say that.
Humboldt County-
Humboldt County does not have a shelter.
Nor did we set out to, uh, produce one, to, to, to establish one.
So, with the, with the shelter that's located in our county, there you go.
That's a better term.
We don't have an agreement with them right now, and they don't have a board set up, so-
Though we're contributing to them.
If-
Paying rent for a building.
Yeah.
If you, if you want to continue-
And buy them property.
To help them out.
Yeah.
We're, yes, I think you need a 2080 agreement, um, probably with them and with the city, on what your expectations are. Also, you know, if they're gonna set up a board, you guys as a group need to decide whether you want part of any agreement with that shelter to be that a member of the board supervisor sits on that board.
I, it'd be wonderful if they set up a shelter in Humboldt County, not the Humboldt County Shelter, because it's not. And it could be a similar agreement, I think Carl mentioned, if it's X amount, if an animal ends up there at a shelter, in a shelter, you paid them to send the animal there.
That would certainly be the easiest way to avoid any confusion. I think if you, if you set up, or help set up a board and put one of, one of the supervisors on that, then-
I don't know, but the supervisors need to be on it. We didn't need to be on the board of Almost Home.
No.
I don't think we needed to be.
And really wanted to be, because it's, then it's a separate entity. But I think that still goes back to the fact that, not all that long ago, law enforcement folks were picking up these stray dogs. Dean, more than any of them.
Yeah.
And I have a dog in my office, I have no place to put it, even for a short amount of time. And all we looked for was the short amount of time facility. And then we got to this somehow, I think I know, I think we all know how, but-
Where we, where we were putting them, the state said you can't put them-
No, and really all we wanted was a nice little state-approved holding facility. I suppose, you know, the grand scheme of things, it would be nice if they were in the holding facility, that the owner would be contacted, and if it was, like John said, people are generally more attached to dogs and cats. Very few, uh, stolen, lost cats reported, but a dog, you see posted all the time. They find the dog, they take the dog home, you know, end of story. Worst case scenario, there's never a place found. You hope then that there was a shelter you could take said animal to, you know. And all that, that's all it was. It was really no more and no less. And it's gotten to this, and it's, it's just wasting a lot of everybody's time, that we never intended for that. We're trying to do it as a convenience, you know, not just for the sheriff and his department, but for the county, and make it, you know, run a little bit better, so we didn't have stray animals running amok. But like Bruce said, if we don't get something figured out, pretty soon we're gonna be taking care of cows and deer and everything else.
Well, I guess that's my question, is what, if, if it's the city we have to set up an agreement with, then, then let's get the, the progress started so that we're, whatever agreement, and if we have to call some 2080 agreement lawyer that can put this thing together, by all means, let's, let's get it done so that we can do it.
My, my suggestion would be, I think you could do it with two of you, me with Travis, and, and talk to him about it, or else invite Travis to another meeting, that maybe it's only discussing how to go forward with the shelter, what, what options you guys have, and what the city might be interested in. The other one would be to have a joint city council or supervisor meeting where you talk with Humboldt about what they want to do. I don't know that you necessarily have to work with them on this, but you're sharing the animal control officer, and, and the big thing with the animal control officer is those dogs and cats have to go somewhere, so you both have the same problem. You certainly don't have to deal with the city, but it, it might be easier, or maybe, you know, maybe the city can knows about this stuff much more than I do. I think, I think some of you guys know about how this stuff works better than I do anyway. But maybe they have ideas that I don't have, or that you guys don't have, that would be a better solution too.
Why does the city and the county even need to get involved with a shelter? We just, why wouldn't let some private entity do that and contract them with them?
Well, that, that's what we need, we need a private entity to have the facility, and then we just contract with them to take the so many dollars they're held.
That's what they're, that's what they're up for.
We shouldn't have to finance that shelter, Ryan will do.
Well, no, you, you would finance the shelter by paying for their housing of Humboldt County stray. You know, it, no, you don't need a shelter, they're just, as I see it, the options are, you can say, alright, you know what? We're gonna do this, let's get a 2080 agreement together, and put one supervisor on the board, let's help run this thing. You don't have to do that, but that's one of the options.
Your options are like what we talked about.
The old way, which is you just have a contract with the shelter and take your animals, and you pay so much.
Doesn't make more sense to me.
You know, the third option is do nothing. I bet you're not doing nothing.
Well, they've got their 501(c)(3).
Approved.
Approved. All they need to do is get their board together and get some regulations and stuff set up. So, if they go on with that, then all the county's gonna do is make a donation to it.
That's what I'd like to see it, yeah.
So, if we give them time to get a board together, go from there.
How about the little, there's ten counties, ten cities in this town, in this county, Humboldt, Tribune. Okay, does every little county, every little town kick in that too, or does the county pay?
I've, I've been approached by two towns to join with that, they wanna know why they was left out of it. So, whenever they have another board meeting down there, I've contacted Dean about getting a board meeting going, or a doghouse meeting going, or whatever you want to call it. And, uh, I'm gonna suggest that they go to all the towns in the county, thirteen of them.
And offer them.
And offer to let them come in and-
Part of it.
-pull the money and have one, one building throughout the whole county. Because there's several towns that would like to do that.
I'm sure they have the same issue that the, that the county has, and stray dogs, stray cats, the dog that runs loose all the time, and-
Works for me. So, now, we just sit and wait?
Sit and wait.
Wait for them to get their board to put, put together, I guess.
Who is "them"? That's-
That's the problem, there is no "them" yet.
There's, there's, there's no group that's just walking around with "them" on their T-shirt, saying, here, we're waiting to put a board together, so they don't, I don't think without some of this, that, that we aren't gonna-
There, there's Travis, there's Dean, there's Rick, and myself, and several people from the community that's been meeting to get this house built, so that would be the committee, I would say.
It's not a board, it's-
It's not a board.
The group is trying to form the, them.
Trying to get them, something put together.
And we've got the 501(c) now, so we just need to get a board.
Okay, formed?
Formed, and bylaws and guidelines.
Okay, so then, in your opinion, this deal with this dog, we just let it sit until they get it taken care of, we're good? Because I don't want us to jump up and bite somebody, you know, right square in the what?
I don't know that there's much of anything that they can do.
Alright, that's fine, I get tired of it. I'm tired of dealing with phone calls and, and everything else that we're, so if that's what our advice is, then I get that good with that, so. Our ten-minute meeting is-
You want me to refer?
I'm ready to go. Start.
Alright.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John, yes, thanks.
Thanks, Doggy.
Mary's with the press for sitting through that again.
I'm like you guys, I'm catch hell, but I don't go away after all. It's my job, I guess.
You can open the door now.
Yeah, they all will.
Anyway, uh, my only guy had, Bruce and I met with Travis, campin', about the locks.
Did the walkthrough.
Did the walkthrough in the building. And, uh, we talked with Travis, and we're looking at mainly just doing the off-site locks right now. Visiting with Bruce and I and Travis, it's foolish to put a FOB lock on some of these office doors, because they just got a sheet of glass in them. So, all the FOB lock is gonna do is, uh, tell you who opened the door at what time. It doesn't secure the office at all. And if we're looking at courthouse security, that's something I think we need to look at, is changing the whole door down the road. But I think if we get a, uh, program or a product that will be around for a while, we'll start with the front doors, so those are locked.
Did you look at all exterior doors, then?
All exterior doors.
That'd be the place to go, yep.
Do all the exterior doors first, and then put, uh, the conduit in with the wires and the junction boxes, so we can add cameras as needed for every door.
Try to do it as expensive, get the expensive part done, so that, you know, if he's doing this, and the wires are already in place, then if and when we do the other part, then all he's gotta do is basically make the connection, right?
Right, you know, plan, you know, try to plan ahead so that it's there, now the next step is a little cheaper. But get the basic, basic structure put in.
Yep. Well, on the security part of it, if you, doing the FOB locks on exterior doors, is that-
Like I told Bruce, if we want to secure the courthouse, we can go in there and change all the locks in the whole courthouse, just for the change, to get the fact that, oh, there's so many keys floating around, we can just change the locks for probably ten percent of that cost.
Correct.
But that doesn't tell you who's entering the building when, things like that. And you still have the issue, and, you know, somebody loses a key, well, now the key's floating around, right there.
And then you go right, start the cycle over again.
Start the cycle over.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and we were talking, security-wise- Uh, and we were talking, security-wise, well, cameras, better doors, make the building more secure.
Well, now, obviously, that starts with the exterior doors, cause it's, if people that aren't supposed to be in here can't get in here, it solves quite a bit of the issue.
Yeah, and when there is cameras watching, people are a little more...
Right.
You know, and then they know that it's down at the sheriff's office on a big screen TV, that they're watching you all the time.
Mm-hmm.
It makes people a little more comfortable in the building, knowing that someone is watching.
And he's gonna give us a breakdown, so that, you know, we can do this hopefully in stages, and not have to have the big balloon.
Right.
The way it was proposed at the first...
It's unfortunate society has changed where a guy has to do this, cause it's...
Right.
Only Humboldt Iowa, but crap happens everywhere.
I think that's a good start. And it covers a lot of the, the thought process. I mean, the security right off of that.
Yeah.
And then, uh, the expansion of that is needed.
So, that's kinda what I, that's all I had this week.
Good idea.
Okay.
Oh, on Wednesday, the, I see that, I'm kinda confused. On Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, I had a de-categorization meeting, Webster City, in the afternoon. And on Friday, the twenty-eighth, had a second judicial district meeting in Webster City in the morning. And that's my official meeting for last week.
Okay. Uh, Monday, the twenty-fourth, I had a V A meeting in the afternoon. Uh, twenty-fifth, I had the food pantry, helped unload all the food and put some of it away. The twenty-sixth, I had a Midas meeting in Fort Dodge. And, uh, outside of phone calls and people stopping the house, that's about all I had.
Other than the fact that when we did unload that food pantry truck, I don't think it ever did stop raining.
No, it didn't.
By the time I got back in my truck, I was froze. So...
That was cold, yeah.
Ran the rest of the day with my heater on, trying to warm back up.
It was cold and wet. We need a canopy out there.
Yes, we do.
Mr. Chairman had no meetings, I was out of town all weekend, I didn't get any phone calls. Very quiet.
There you go.
That's cause you shut it off.
Well, your son hasn't called yet about the work you did on the shoddy work on your garage.
Yeah.
Alright, Tuesday at, uh, Food Pantry, I was up there. Then Tuesday night, I was in Eagle Grove for the Edmo meeting. Wednesday, twenty-sixth, I was at the courthouse walkthrough with Rick and Peggy and Justin?
Travis.
Travis, I'm sorry. Then Thursday, I was in Webster City for the CFR meeting. About all I'd tell you on the CFR is they've got the big, if you go by down there, they've got the two-story part, uh, that's all shingled, um, a lot of the windows are in. They've got the rafter set on the backside, um, for, that's the residential per- uh, part of the, I think, uh, they're hoping that they get that, uh, sheeting on this week, and, uh, get shingles going before we get too much cold weather. Um, their goal is, is to still have it enclosed, and they're gonna try to do the brickwork before, uh, gets too cold also. So, um, I'll let you know, they're doing walkthroughs. Um, they're, they got quite a bit of the upper level already sheet rocked up there. So, they are moving forward, still on schedule for spring, um, opening. So, exciting, um, other than the fact that when you have to pay the bills once a month to see how much it's costing. Um, but a lot of things are going on down there, so that's all I had for my week.
Create a facility when they get that done.
Yes. Um, anything else? Peggy have anything that she needed? Okay.
I have, uh, something, you guys get the email, uh, really from John, or forwarded from Peggy from John, on the cost of these law publications. I know Dave did, cause he responded to it. Lot. I'm more, well over twenty thousand dollars. And, you know, we had some discussion on this earlier. Uh, we, way back in our budget time, didn't put that money in there because of the fact that you can get these publications online. And I know John, he's still spending a lot of time on this animal control stuff, and he's probably got more, I was kinda hoping he'd stick around and put his two cents worth in, but, uh, I had a little conversation with him. You know, we approved a new computer, uh, last week, I think it was. I still say, you know what? We stick to our guns. We said we can get this information online. You could ask John, he can give you a little more clarification, that yes, you can, if you have operational technology, it's, it's available. And it's considerably less money. You know, it, the, the cost of these publications is just astronomical, and that's what we were trying to do, is save some money. So I, I still, if, if at all possible, we pursue the online, we make sure that they're available and that the technology works. But to spend a phenomenal amount of money for something that very few people look at, very seldom, is not what we, that's why we discounted the budget money to get...
Even online, it was costing a arm and a leg.
Quite expensive, but compared to the publication, considerably less.
Yeah.
So, uh, we need to upgrade the technology, we need to upgrade the, the physical, you know, electrical things that we talked about.
That's something, when we did our walkthrough, we walked through that area, yeah, Bruce and Peggy and Travis, which he has nothing to do with, but he, um, pointed out all the electrical issues we have up there in the courtroom.
Well, it looks like a nightmare for, uh, drop cords. If, if a drop cord quit working, you'd have to have a recess of several, at least a half hour track, track down which drop cord.
You'll get a different drop cord.
And of course, I haven't been in the courtroom up there when they ran the air conditioner, but they turned it on, and it was like a corn dryer.
Oh, my God.
I can, I can understand why they can't hear in there. I mean, it's...
Well, that, the ceiling fan that runs up there...
There's two of them.
Cause I'm not making noise.
It sounds like...
They, they, they hum like...
It sounds like the bearing in it is like, "Grr, grr, grr", and then if you run it faster, it just...
It makes, uh...
And then, then you turn on the air conditioner, and it sounds like a, a, a corn dryer from the, uh, early seventies.
The corn dryer would make it pretty good comparison.
Well, that's, that's kinda...
These are things we gotta look, look at in the future for upgrades.
Well, you know, and the way I look at it, the, the money that might get in the budget for the, you know, courtroom business, why take phenomenal amount of money for some publication?
Maybe you need to shift that money from there to...
Like Dave said, it's still to have them available, and I agree with having them available, but the technology version, the on, quote-unquote, online version, and there's like quite a bit of money left over for the air conditioner, the fans, get rid of the drop cords, fix electrical service, things that are really, that, that are always used, you know? And I think, well, John mentioned, and a couple other people did, and you said the air conditioner sounds like a corn dryer, that would be something that you'd like to get addressed and get fixed. But we'd like to have the money to do it. It's hard to put this, to me, huge amount of money towards these publications, you're not gonna have anything left to buy another drop cord. I mean...
Well, I agree with you. Twenty thousand dollars is, is a huge amount of money.
Too much money.
For the uncertainty to know that Humboldt County's gonna continue to have a court here for two years, for a year, for, I...
Yep, and it...
It's a huge amount of money that we gotta try to find out what's coming.
I would equate this to, uh, we all probably get magazine subscriptions. And you probably, on some of those, picture magazine, uh, Sports Illustrated, you know, is one that people like to get. You can get the online version of it, you know, and probably significantly less. Maybe you're not comfortable with that, oh, I don't know about it, but you know what? If someone else is paying for it, you can still get the subscription, but you're gonna look at it online versus it's gonna come and, you know, you're gonna look at it every, every month. Because, and if you don't look at it very often, the online version makes a lot more sense.
Alright, so the actual cost turned out to be twice as much almost as what Greg was estimating.
Yeah, estimated in ninety-eight, I think, for the two publications, and when John checked into them, it come back almost twenty thousand.
I think it was over twenty thousand.
Yeah, it was around twenty thousand for the two.
At least twice as much.
Back up to date since the first of the year.
At least twice as much. And then, he had some information, and I think you guys all got that email, about the, I think the online, if you will, version was considerably less.
It was like six hundred a month, something of the kind?
Yep. It was considerably less. And then we just had the discussion on the new computer, which we approved. So that's the step that I think we need to go. You can see how much less cost you have involved, and this thousand, tens of thousands of dollars of money, and then you just mentioned some of the other real, probably immediate things, between getting rid of drop cords and fixing the air conditioning, and maybe a new ceiling fan, that you could start getting taken care of, cause you'd have some money to do it with. So...
Alright.
That's my take on it, and I don't, obviously Peggy's not here, we don't have anything in front of us to go, but I just wanted to throw that out, and if, take a look at that email, if, if you haven't. It shows some of the numbers that Dave was talking about.
I'd love to, I guess, I didn't respond to some of the, I was kinda shocked, so...
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's my other discussion.
Alright.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion.
Second base motion.
In a second. Ball in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries. We're out at nine thirty.